Good morning, everybody. Technical issues, apologies for that. So, thank you to Amanda here for letting me use her laptop. Welcome to a regularly scheduled Board of Ed meeting. Written advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice was provided, the time, date, and location of this meeting. Included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes are being kept by the Board Secretary and will be made available promptly to any public requesting them from the Board Secretary at twenty-five Lushen Lane, Hightstown, New Jersey. Minutes will be provided at cost and in accordance with Board policy. Are there any Board members present who believe this meeting to be in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act? There being none, we may proceed. In compliance with the fire code of the state of New Jersey, I call your attention to the emergency exits for this room, which are located behind you and to both sides of the cafeteria. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item C?
Having received the material, having read the materials received, I move the agenda be approved as submitted.
Hold the board, please. Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Laverty?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lands?
Yes.
Item D?
Be it resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting. These closed sessions concern personnel. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Hold the board, please. Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Laverty?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lands?
Yes.
We'll now move on to our student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to see all of you, and we are thrilled to share some of the recent school happenings.
Before we go any further, we would love to echo our praise for all of the educators in the district, some of who have been our teachers in the past, who will be honored with the Governor's Educator of the Year Award tonight. It is a well-deserved honor, and we are so proud of all the EWRSD staff receiving this distinction. Congratulations once again.
We would like to share some updates on our sports teams here at Hightstown. Our cheer team that recently won at the national level was awarded a state champions at the NJ WARSDCOED level. This is such an amazing achievement, and we are so proud of our cheer team. Our boys and girls basketball teams have a doubleheader matchup this Thursday night, so be there to support our basketball student athletes as they continue their successful seasons. Many members of our track team will be competing at the state level soon, which is such a great way to represent our school as the top runners in the district. Additionally, within our wrestling team, Kara Reyes became the first girls' state qualifier in school history. Five boys wrestlers will be moving on to the Region Six Tournament with Chris Croppenies earning the district champion award. Additionally, Coach Russo is coach of the region.
Next, we would like to highlight an exciting event happening next Friday from five to eight PM. On March seventh, the Hightstown Girls Volleyball Team and the Senior Class of 2025 are hosting the second annual Student versus Staff Volleyball Tournament. We encourage students to grab their friends to form a team for this very much anticipated event, especially since prizes will be awarded to both the winning team and the team exhibiting the most school spirit. If any student have any questions, please reach out to Machino or Mr. Bucci, but if not, fill out the registration in the form found in the daily announcements.
For our student athletes, please understand that we are two weeks away from the spring sports season beginning. At this point, you should have already registered for a sport on the parent portal, which is now closed, and you must now submit a physical by the end of the week with zero exceptions to the nurse's office. Follow the daily announcements to understand what is happening with tryouts for your teams, and good luck to everyone.
We would like to take a moment to highlight and commend all of our students whose artwork was exhibited at the Hickory Corner Library this past month. The incredible three-D compositions created by both our middle schoolers at Melvin H. Krebs and high schoolers here at Hightstown have been admired by our entire community. We strongly encourage you to visit the library and see their work, which will be displayed until the twenty-eighth. A huge thank you to our talented artists.
That concludes the end of our report. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and we look forward to seeing you again at the next meeting.
Great, thank you so much for that report. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to our student, to our presentation of the evening for the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Mark?
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Daniels. I'm the very proud superintendent of the East Windsor Regional School District. You were very calm and controlled tonight. It's good for you to be here. I imagine most of you were here tonight for the Governor's Educator of the Year recognition. If you are, could you put your hands up, please? All right, let's make sure you're in the right location. So, before we get started, I'm gonna say a few words, but I just wanna make sure and do a quick roll call to ensure that we have the very deserving recipients here with us tonight. So, just wanna make sure you're here. So, Hugh New, are you here? Let me see your hand. Okay, all right. Jackie O'Keefe, okay. Caitlin Stevens, all right. Patty Togans, okay. Nicole Kuchi, all right. Amy Hines, great. Michelle Randall, all right. Laura Lynch, Angie Williams, Marissa O'Malley. I like what you're doing, right, because we're gonna be about to do that. I mean, I like that. I like it. I like it. Marissa O'Malley, okay. Kimberly Rose, Rose Eyes, okay. And Eden Edinger. Okay, so let's give our recipients a huge round of applause to get us started. Okay? So, I'd say it's an honor to welcome you to this special celebration of excellence in education this evening for our annual Governor's Educator of the Year recognition. This evening, we gather to acknowledge the heart, dedication, and impact of some of our district's most outstanding professionals. Education is not just a profession, it's a calling, one that requires passion, resilience, and a continued commitment to students. The outstanding individuals we recognize today embody these qualities. So, on behalf of the East Windsor Regional School District, I extend my deepest gratitude and congratulations to each of you. Thank you for all you do for our students, and I say most importantly, thank you for continuing to choose the East Windsor Regional School District as your professional home. So, without further ado, we're gonna transition into the recognition portion. Before I call some folks up, I just wanna share a little background in terms of process here. You know, we have about six hundred certified staff members and about three hundred or so other staff members in the district, so this is no small feat for the twelve individuals that we are highlighting tonight. I should also acknowledge that, look, we've got a host of other individuals who could also be here tonight being recognized, but I think it's important for us to make sure that we certainly celebrate and highlight the individuals who are deserving of this recognition this evening. From a process standpoint, you know, there's a nomination period where members of the community can submit their nomination form regarding who they think's deserving, expressing kind of some rationale to why. The main criteria that we use to kind of score and determine who we think will rise and elevate to being that deserving recipient are based on a few factors, mainly someone who serves as an exceptionally skilled and dedicated educator, someone who inspires students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, someone who demonstrates leadership and innovation in and outside the classroom, someone who has the respect and admiration of students, parents, administrators, and colleagues, and someone who plays an active role in the school community. So, with that said, I'm gonna begin things this evening by starting with our Ethel McKnight School. I'm gonna ask the principal, Mr. Nicole Folks, to come on up, and we will begin by recognizing Jackie O'Keefe.
Good evening. It is my great honor to recognize Jackie O'Keefe as Ethel McKnight Elementary School's Governor/Educator of the Year. Mrs. O'Keefe embodies the qualities of an exceptional educator: dedication, passion, and creativity. As a physical education teacher, she is committed to the health and well-being of every student, ensuring that all children feel valued and included regardless of their athletic ability. Her innovative and adaptive approach makes physical education engaging and accessible for all. She not only teaches fundamental motor skills, but also instills confidence, teamwork, and a love for lifelong fitness. Beyond the gym, Mrs. O'Keefe is a role model admired by students, families, and colleagues alike for her ability to inspire and connect with those she teaches. Mrs. O'Keefe's impact on our school community is immeasurable, and we are so proud to celebrate her as our Governor's Educator of the Year. Please join me in congratulating her on this well-deserved honor.
You know what I forgot to mention? At the end of this, okay, all the recipients, stay for a moment so we can take your group picture. Are we doing individuals right now, or... You better, boy. Just checking, just checking.
Just figuring out the process. All right. Mrs. Yu, Hugh New, there you are. All right. It is my privilege to recognize Hugh New as Ethel McKnight Elementary School's Educational Services Professional of the Year. As an educational assistant, Mrs. Yu exemplifies dedication, intuition, and a true eagerness to grow. Though still early in her career, she approaches each day with the skill and insight of a seasoned professional. She takes the time to truly understand each child as an individual, adapting her support to meet their unique needs and fostering both academic and social-emotional growth. Beyond her core responsibilities, Mrs. Yu is a constant source of support in the classroom, always ready to step in wherever needed to create a positive and productive learning environment. Her adaptability, collaborative spirit, and unwavering commitment to our students make her an invaluable part of our school community. Mrs. Yu's impact is lasting, and we are so fortunate to have her at EMK. Please join me in celebrating her well-deserved recognition as our Educational Services Professional of the Year.
Okay, moving right along, we are transitioning to Walter C. Black. I'd like to call up the principal, Heather Gladkowski.
Okay, I'd like to welcome Amy Hines up to the podium. She's our Educational Specialist of the Year. Amy Hines serves as one of our speech and language pathologists, and that's her little daughter Eleanor back there. Her dedication, kindness, and expertise have made an incredible difference in the lives of so many children. Amy approaches every situation with a positive attitude and always manages to find the light, even in the most challenging moments. Her optimism is contagious, and her ability to lift others up is something we all admire. She's the type of person who is always willing to help and is always finding creative ways to support those around her. Amy takes the time to really get to know each student and creates individualized plans to meet their unique needs. Amy's a huge support to families as well. She keeps parents updated, offering guidance so they can support their children at home. Amy's dedication, compassion, and commitment to helping others makes her such a valuable part of our school community. Congratulations for this well-deserved honor. Now, our Teacher of the Year, Nicole Kuchi. Nicole Kuchi is a basic skills teacher at the Walter C. Black School. She has been part of the East Windsor Regional School District for twenty-four years. Nikki goes out of her way to make sure every student feels supported and ready to learn, always finding ways to make learning fun and effective. Her use of creative strategies to help kids learn their letters and sounds, and her motivational techniques that include small rewards are just a few examples of why she's an exceptional teacher. Nikki is a valuable resource for her colleagues, always willing to share tips, ideas, and various materials. She is a seesaw ambassador, and she is enrolled in- She is a Seesaw Ambassador, and she is enrolled in the Wilson Training Program to become a Foundation's Coach. Finding ways to enhance instruction using ed tech like the Seesaw Program is a passion of hers, and she willingly shares this knowledge with others. Additionally, she spends much of her own time learning how to help teachers with phonics and literacy instruction, showing her dedication to supporting our young students as they develop into readers. Nikki is a familiar face at our school events. She builds strong relationships with her students and ensures parents know how their children are doing in school and how they can help at home. She is an incredible teacher, a supportive colleague, and a true asset to our school community. Congratulations on this accomplishment.
Okay, moving on to GNR. I'd like to call to the podium, the principal, Lori Emerson.
Okay, Kaitlyn Stevens. Nurse Stevens' nurturing nature and dedication to student well-being make her an invaluable part of the GNR community. She is a compassionate advocate for students and families with medical needs, and she ensures every child receives the care and support they need. Nurse Stevens goes beyond treating minor injuries and illnesses. She works closely with families to help them navigate health challenges and access essential resources. Whether it's connecting parents with community services or providing ongoing support for chronic conditions, she always promotes the health and safety of all students. In addition to her work with families, Nurse Stevens has developed a strong rapport with students, creating an atmosphere of comfort and trust in the nurse's office. Her approachable and empathetic demeanor helps students feel at ease knowing they are in good hands. Nurse Stevens is also a key resource for staff, ensuring everyone is informed about procedures for handling medical situations. Her dedication to educating and supporting the entire school community has made a lasting impact, making her more than deserving of the Educational Services Provider of the Year. Congratulations. And Mrs. Togans, our Teacher of the Year. Come on up.
Mrs. Togans' dedication to her students and the teaching profession is unmatched. She is committed to creating and nurturing an inspiring learning environment and is especially passionate about teaching reading and developing students' foundational reading skills. She works tirelessly to ensure each student builds a strong literacy base, helping them develop the phonemic awareness, fluency, and comprehension necessary for lifelong learning. Going above and beyond, she provides one-on-one support and tailors her strategies to meet individual needs and fosters confidence in her students so they take the risks they need to learn to read and become readers. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Togans plays an essential role in supporting her colleagues. She frequently provides professional development focused on foundational reading instruction, sharing innovative methods and best practices that enhance literacy school-wide. As a member of our school's Intervention and Referral Services Committee, she offers suggestions and strategies for teachers to use with their students who are struggling readers. Always available to help her colleagues, she is a trusted mentor who offers guidance and encouragement whenever needed. Her unwavering commitment to excellence and her supportive nature have made her an invaluable leader in the GNR school community, truly deserving of the Governor's Educator of the Year recognition.
Okay, moving on to Perry L. Drew School. I'd like to welcome to the podium, the principal, Jasmine Allen.
Good evening, everyone. Could I please have Ms. Laura Lynch come to the podium? Laura Lynch is a remarkable educational assistant who embodies empathy, adaptability, and a commitment to student success. Laura Lynch's dedication to her students is truly inspiring. She has an innate ability to connect with each child on a personal level, understanding their unique needs and strengths. Whether it's academically, socially, or emotionally, Laura creates opportunities for her students to thrive. She listens with genuine care, offering a safe space for them to express themselves while also providing the support they need to succeed. Her compassion and dedication go far beyond her official role. She is truly invested in the success and well-being of every student that she works with. Laura's ability to make quick decisions and find solutions to challenges has a tremendous impact on the classroom environment. She is known for her upbeat energy and always strives to create a positive and productive atmosphere, one that benefits not only her students but our entire school. Above all, what stands out about Laura is her deep care for everyone she interacts with. From students to staff to families, she has a unique ability to inspire and empower those around her, making a lasting impact for all who are fortunate enough to work with her. Laura, you play an integral role in PLD's success, and it is an honor to work with you. I'm so excited to see you recognized as Perry L. Drew's Educator/Service Professional of the Year. Congratulations. Could I please have Ms. Michelle Randall come to the podium? Michelle is also celebrating her 25th year in education as a whole this year. So, it's a great achievement for her. Michelle Randall is an exceptional educator, mentor, and leader within the Perry L. Drew School. Though I've only had the privilege of knowing her for just one year, it is clear that her impact runs deep. Michelle is more than a teacher. She is a guiding force for her students, a pillar of support for her colleagues, and a trusted partner for parents. One of the most inspiring things about Michelle is her ability to connect with students beyond academics. This year, she provided unwavering support to a new student struggling with personal challenges at home. She not only gave this student a safe space to share and heal, but also equipped them with strategies to build resilience and self-advocacy. This is who Michelle is, an educator who teaches not just lessons, but life skills, instilling confidence and strength in her students. Beyond her work with students, Michelle is a mentor to her colleagues and a trusted voice for parents. She has a way of making everyone feel supported around her and heard. Whether she's helping a fellow teacher navigate a challenge, guiding, offering guidance to a student going through a difficult time, reassuring a parent with thoughtful advice, or planning an unforgettable fifth grade event. Michelle leads with compassion and wisdom. She doesn't just do her job, she invests in the success of those around her, always striving to lift others up. Michelle, you are the kind of educator who makes a lasting impact, not just for the school year, but for a lifetime. It is with great pride and admiration that we celebrate Mrs. Michelle Randall as Drew School's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
Okay, moving right along, we're at the middle school. We've left the elementary school, so now we're at Melvin H. Krebs Middle School. I'd like to call to the podium, I think, an assistant principal tonight, Mr. Rodney Pointe Djour.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. I would like to call up Angela Williams. Ms. Angie Williams is the Melvin H. Krebs Middle School Specialist of the Year, and she embodies all of the characteristics of an outstanding staff member. Angie works closely with our sixth-grade students as a grade-level school counselor. She supports students to ensure they are getting the support they need both academically and socially-emotionally to be successful in their classes. In addition, she is a team player and loves children. She can be found eating lunch with her students, helping them with their lockers, and walking them to class. Ms. Williams makes strong connections with her students and families. In her nomination letter, a parent writes, "She has shown me the bright side of dealing with a guidance counselor. She provides support both to students and parents. She follows up and follows through on things. She is knowledgeable and has the life experiences and education to match. She has a warm and welcoming disposition. From the first day of meeting her, she makes you feel like your old friends. She makes you feel like she is worthy of your trust, and all she wants to do is help." Ms. Williams is kind and passionate of others. She also values the greater MHK community. She is a member of our SEL Committee and is dedicated to the mission of the committee, which is to help students connect to MHK and infuse social-emotional learning into all courses at Krebs. Ms. Williams is also one of the advisors of our eighth-grade Peer Leader Program. She promotes leadership and mentorship with our students. Ms. Williams hasn't been at MHK very long, but she has already made a meaningful impact on her students and the school. She is a well-respected staff member and a very deserving staff member of this honor. Congratulations, Angie. MHK is lucky to have you supporting our students. Okay, next, I'd like to call up Marissa O'Malley. Mrs. O'Malley can be seen welcoming students into the building every day. Her morning duty is the front school of the building. She is the perfect person to serve in that post. She is positive and greets students with a great big smile. She has served the students of East Windsor Regional School District since 2018 at Melvin H. Krebs Middle School. Ms. O'Malley has spent her time in the district as a special education teacher. Over the years, she has taught a variety of science courses, including in-class support, out-of-class replacement, and LLD classes. She enjoys working with this special population of students. Over the years, her colleagues, supervisors, and administrators have commended her for the following: designing creative lessons that meet the needs of her students, meeting with students during her lunch, and academic support to provide them with extra help and reteach concepts; serving on the Intervention and Referral Services Committee. She volunteers her time to be an advocate and mentor for MHK students. She is an asset to the committee and comes up with various ways to help students; being inclusive of all students and staff at MHK; working with new staff members as a mentor. Her work ethic is truly unmatched, and her commitment to student success is evident in every aspect of her teaching practice. Mrs. O'Malley is a valuable member of the MHK community. She cares about her students and goes above and beyond for the greater community. We are lucky to have her serving the students at Krebs. Marissa, we are proud that you represent MHK at this year's Governor's Teacher Year Awards.
Okay, moving right along here. Last but not least, we are at the high school. Hightstown High School principal, Dennis Vincent.
Hi, Mr. Vincent. Thank you, and congratulations to all the award winners this year. Hightstown High School is overjoyed to announce that Ms. Kimberly Rosehouse has been named Hightstown High School's Governor Support Staff of the Year. Kim is an invaluable member of our Child Study Team, whose professionalism, dedication, and innovation has made a lasting impact on our students, families, and school community. Kim goes above and beyond to ensure every student receives the support they need. Her deep understanding of special education laws and best practice allows her to advocate for students' academic, social, and emotional success. She fosters trusting relationships with students and families, creating a collaborative environment where everyone feels heard and valued. Kim actively collaborates with teachers, administrators, and support staff to implement targeted innovation strategies. Her ability to analyze data and provide actual insight has led to measurable improvements in her student outcomes. She also serves as a trusted mentor to her colleagues, guiding them in their professional growth. Kim approaches every challenge with compassion and problem-solving insight. She inspires those around her to embrace a culture of inclusivity, equity, and aligning the values we uphold at Hightstown High School. Whether managing challenging caseloads, navigating complex parent interactions, and addressing departmental changes, Kim handles every situation with professionalism and grace. Her unwavering commitment to the students never falters, even in the face of adversity. Kim actively engages in professional development, community outreach, staying ahead of emerging trends to better serve her students. She also supports our out-of-district placements and collaborates with the community therapists to provide comprehensive care. Kim understands what it means to be a dedicated professional in education. Her passion for her work, her kindness, and her support for our students and staff make her a very important part of Hightstown community. Congratulations, Kim, well deserved. Last but not least, here at Hightstown High School, we're thrilled to announce Ms. Eden Edinger is the Hightstown High School Governor's Teacher of the Year. Eden embodies everything it means to be an exceptional educator: dedication, creativity, and profound commitment to our students' success. Eden, as a teacher of the AP Language and Composition Dual Enrollment English, Eden goes beyond simply delivering curriculum. She invests in her students' growth, often taking the time to provide individual support, whether it's brainstorming an essay, reviewing it, or reviewing a college application material. Eden brings learning to life by integrating cultural events, personal interests, real-world application in their lessons. From her reading challenges to collaborative writing exercises, her students are not only learning, but they're inspired to think critically and creatively. Eden is building a classroom environment where every student feels valued and supported. Her ability to provide constructive feedback and encouragement, self-reflection, helps students develop academically and personally. Eden's impact is beyond her students. She plays a vital role in mentoring new teachers and fostering collaborative collaboration among her colleagues. Her willingness to share her expertise and support exemplifies her dedication to the teaching profession. Eden has asked her students to often describe her as a role model. She even is a trusted friend. Many of her former students continue to seek her guidance, a testament to her lasting impression she makes on everyone. Eden's passion for teaching, coupled with her humility and selfishness, makes her a shining example of excellence in education. We're extremely proud to celebrate her. Thank you, Eden, on your well-deserved honor.
Okay, well, unfortunately, that concludes our Governor's Educator of the Year recognition. So, why don't we give one large round of applause to this year's recipients?
So why don't we give a one large round of applause to this year's recipients? So, um, a couple of words in closing. Didn't mention this at the beginning, so, um, our recipients this year are eligible, uh, to, um, be considered for the Mercer County Educator of the Year recognition. That process, uh, begins, uh, pretty soon, so, um, they can take it beyond the district level, which I think is, is pretty cool. Um, a few thank-yous from, from my end today. I'll, I'll begin by just thanking our educators, our professionals. Um, you know, we don't take lightly the work that you do. Just listening to some of the ways that you've been described by folks, uh, within the district speaks volumes in terms of the work you do each day. And, um, I'm just thrilled that you're here. And on behalf of our students, I will humbly say thank you for, for being such dedicated professionals, okay? I also want to thank, uh, the folks who support you, and, and those would be your family members and who are here tonight and friends potentially, but I'd say family's important. And obviously, based on some of our families in here tonight. Some of our families are well-represented, and I love the support that's here. I think you do your best work because of the support system that you, you have at home. So thank you to our families. Give it to the families. Give it up for those families. Thank you. Um, I wanna, I wanna thank our principals and administrators who, uh, took the time to, um, write those kind words for each of our recipients tonight and be here to, to share those words. So thank you to our principals and our assistant principal from the middle school. I also want to thank, um, the Human Resources Department. They do a lot of the organizational work connected to making tonight happen, as well as Luz Gonzalez, my administrative assistant. Definitely want to thank her. Also want to thank, uh, EWEA, who, uh, they were bearing gifts this evening. So thank you for their support. And, um, with that said, I'm gonna turn things over to Tina. Tina, do you have any, any words of, of, uh, joy for these amazing educators?
Absolutely. It's a joyful occasion. I just want to congratulate you all and thank you for your tireless, endless work. I know all our, all of our employees, but our teachers and our educators and our educating assistants and our support staff, they all go above and beyond. I know you work during hours. I can't officially say you work after hours, but from personal experience, I know you do. I know you put a lot into this, so thank you so much, and congratulations.
Okay, so last thing that you need to do right now. So we'll, we'll probably take a five-minute hiatus, little, little pause, but before you go, if we could just have our recipients just gather here in, in front of the podium, and we'll do a brief picture. Tina, if you want to join us? Tina, if you want to join us for the picture, alright? And then, uh... Oh, you know what? The plaque, wow. I mean, I'm not gonna tell them, no, they can't bring the plaque.
Okay, we'll begin again. Our next stop is our superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening again. Just a couple of quick announcements this evening. I'd start, I'll start with budget. We're kind of in budget season, so couple of things just to bring to everyone's attention. So tomorrow, we have the governor's budget address at 3:00 PM, I believe it is. I thought it was 2:00 PM, is it 3:00 PM? Is it 3:00? Okay, it's tomorrow afternoon. Typically, two days after the governor's budget address, school districts across the state receive their state aid numbers. Last week, the New Jersey Department of Education shared with districts across the state, and I think they did this to be supportive and to be somewhat transparent in terms of a somewhat of a projection in terms of what state aid would reflect. But they indicated that school districts should not anticipate receiving greater than a 3% reduction in state aid compared to the amount that they received for the 2024-25 school year. So on one hand, you know, we could, you know, we could be appreciative of that. However, if we were to be reduced by 3% compared to the current year's budget, that would equate to about $1.5 million less state aid than we received last year. So I'm hoping that that's not the case for us. We've budgeted, we've planned for a budget with flat aid for this year, anticipating that we're going to get a comparable amount that we received last year. So we'll find out in short order regarding the budget. Another update for tonight, just in terms of the middle school principal position. We've been in the process of interviewing candidates. Started with a poll of, well, we had about over 60 applicants, but I screened about 12 applicants. We brought in eight individuals to meet with a committee last week, excuse me. The next phase in the process is to invite about three or four individuals back in to identify a final candidate. So the goal will be to have a recommendation for the board at the March 10th meeting. And with that, it concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Next up is our first opportunity for board member comments.
I just wanted to thank all of the teachers and staff that were at the high school conferences on Thursday. The weather was terrible. So thank you to everybody who came out. And also, I wanted to say thank you for the new signs in the high school that were helpful in trying to find your way around. So, thanks. And thank you again to all the, congratulations to all the recipients of the Governor's Educator of the Year Award.
I too want to congratulate all the, all the teachers, the governors, educator recipients. So great to be honored that way. And I also want to thank for the signage that got me to the counseling office where I usually get lost. So, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to our first opportunity for public comment, if any of the members of the public wish to speak. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to executive session, and will be about 15 to 20 minutes. Thank you.
If you are accelerated, if you come out of middle school having completed an Earth science and physical science in middle school at an advanced level, you will start on biology. You will then move into either chemistry or physics plus an elective in sophomore year. You then have to take chemistry or physics, whichever one you didn't take.
But is it a, why are we requiring to take physics? Why can't they take another, in the policy, district policy fifty-four sixty? Three credits, five credit each. First via bio slash life sciences. The second course can, shall include chemistry, environmental science, or physics. And So you don't have to graduate. And one additional lab inquiry based science course as an elective. So we're good, right? We are up to the
Yeah, we're good. Not every, not every student needs to take physics. But if you're on an accelerated path, that is the, that is the trajectory that you follow.
So if they don't take physics, they would take another elective, right? Let's say they take bio first, then they take chemistry.
The accelerated path.
Okay. And that the third year would be elective. Let's say they don't want to take physics. Because they're not on that track. Because physics would be someone who's doing that type of expertise, that skill set they would need in college year. Some like my kid wouldn't need physics because she's going to the business track.
On the accelerated path, it's, it's for middle school, starting in middle school all the way through high school, although we can, checkpoints, there's checkpoints along the way. The student has a choice in continuing in the high school. Being a comprehensive district, the colleges and universities out there are asking for, are looking for, and there, there's a better chance of getting into more, have more opportunities with a well-rounded science background. Instead of zoning in on one facet like biology or chemistry. So that's the premise behind it. Again, it's been said, we, as a board can discuss this if we want to change anything, but it's been this way for quite some time. And our students being accepted to colleges and universities have increased over the years a lot based on what our acceptance rates were before we put this into place as a district. So that's kind of the history behind that.
So it ties with our district policy then?
It does, because the district policy is at least. The district policy stays at least. There are students who are on an accelerated path, so there's a different trajectory for them.
I have a question. I thought you came in taking bio. If you take bio freshman year or sophomore, you would take chemistry or physics. And then junior year, you would take whatever you didn't take sophomore year. So you do have to take physics.
Yes.
Right?
No, that's what the accelerated path option is.
Well, you know, not everybody takes bio the first year.
Right, but if you take bio, if you're coming in freshman year taking bio, that mean, that means you're on that accelerated track because you took the physical science and crap. So then you're coming in freshman year, you're going to take bio. Sophomore year, you're going to take chemistry or physics. And then junior year, you would take whatever you didn't take. So if you took physics, you would switch it. So you do have to take chemistry or physics, depending on the, if, yeah.
Yeah, I guess we said physics because most people are having the unapprehension of taking physics. But yeah, on the traditional path, it's chemistry or physics. So if you want to take physics, you can take physics. But you don't have to, if you, on the traditional path, because you're taking Earth science and physical freshman year, bio. It's only that accelerated path that it's the issue.
Right.
Any other questions?
So if you are not on accelerated path, if you just take biochemistry, then they can take any other two since they're not on that track, correct? And it doesn't disturb that graduating requirements of number of credits they need for science to graduate, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is my understanding. Sandy, I'm sorry, can you come to the mic? Thank you.
If you are not on the accelerated track, freshman year, you would take Earth, half a semester, I'm sorry, one semester of Earth, one semester of physical science. Sophomore year, you take biology. Junior year, you would take chem or physics of your choice, or both, whatever you wanted at that point. So that's why, so if you're accelerated, you would have bio freshman year. If you're not accelerated, you would have Earth physical freshman year. I just want to make sure on the record that we weren't saying accelerated was both bio as well as non-accelerated for bio freshman year.
Next, we will move to the item seven B, the twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
That's really just, it's regurgitating what I shared during my superintendent's report. Just for the mere fact that it's timely. And the broadcast that the DOE shared last week regarding the communication connected to no more than three percent reduction compared to this year's current state aid allotment. Just wanted to make sure that the board was fully aware of that. So it could be a non-issue for us, but if there will be a reduction, it will not exceed three percent compared to the state aid that we receive for the current school year, alright? And the other information on there is just connected to the governor's address, state aid, assignments that will come out forty-eight hours later. And then March tenth will be
earth science and physical science in middle school at an advanced level, you will start on biology. You will then move into either chemistry or physics plus an elective in sophomore year. You then have to take chemistry or physics, whichever one you didn't take.
But is it a, why are we requiring to take physics? Why can't they take another, in the policy, district policy fifty-four sixty, three credits, five credit each, first via bio slash life sciences? The second course can, shall include chemistry, environmental science, or physics? And? So you don't have to graduate? And one additional lab inquiry based science course as an elective? So we're good, right? We are up to the?
Yeah, we're good. Not every, not every student needs to take physics. But if you're on an accelerated path, that is, that is the trajectory that you follow.
So if they don't take physics, they would take another elective, right? Let's say they take bio first, then they take chemistry.
The accelerated path.
And that the third year would be elective. Let's say they don't wanna take physics because they're not on that track. Because physics would be someone who's doing that type of expertise, that skill set they would need in college year. Something like, my kid wouldn't need physics because she's going to the business track.
On the accelerated path, it's for middle school, starting in middle school all the way through high school, although we can check points. There's checkpoints along the way. The student has a choice in continuing in the high school. Being a comprehensive district, the colleges and universities out there are asking for, are looking for, and there's a better chance of getting into more, have more opportunities with a well-rounded science background instead of zoning in on one facet like biology or chemistry. So that's the premise behind it. Again, it's been said, we, as a board can discuss this if we wanna change anything, but it's been this way for quite some time. And our students being accepted to colleges and universities have increased over the years a lot, based on what our acceptance rates were before we put this into place as a district. So that's kind of the history behind that.
So it ties with our district policy then?
It does, because the district policy is at least. The district policy states at least there are students who are on an accelerated path, so there is a different trajectory for them.
I have a question. I thought you came in taking bio. If you take bio freshman year, sophomore year, you would take chemistry or physics. And then junior year, you would take whatever you didn't take sophomore year. So you do have to take physics.
Yes.
Right?
No, that's what the accelerated path option is.
Well, you know, not everybody takes bio the first year.
Right, but if you take bio, if you're coming in freshman year taking bio, that means that means you're on that accelerated track because you took the physical science and crap. So then you're coming in freshman year, you're gonna take bio. Sophomore year, you're gonna take chemistry or physics. And then junior year, you would take whatever you didn't take. So if you took physics, you would switch it. So you do have to take chemistry or physics, depending on the, yeah.
Yeah, I guess we said physics because most people are having the unapprehension of taking physics. But yeah, on the traditional path, it's chemistry or physics. So if you wanna take physics, you can take physics, but you don't have to if you're on the traditional path because you're taking earth science and physical freshman year bio. It's only that accelerated path that it's the issue.
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
So if you are not on accelerated path, if you just take bio, chemistry, then they can take any other two since they're not on that track, correct? And it doesn't disturb that graduating requirements of number of credits they need for science to graduate, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is my understanding. Sandy, I'm sorry, can you come to the mic? Thank you.
If you are not on the accelerated track, freshman year, you would take half a semester, I'm sorry, one semester of earth, one semester of physical science. Sophomore year, you would take biology. Junior year, you would take chem or physics, so your choice, or both, whatever you want at that point. So that's why, so if you're accelerated, you would have bio freshman year. If you're not accelerated, you would have earth physical freshman year. I just wanted to make sure on the record that we weren't saying accelerated was both bio as well as non-accelerated for bio freshman year.
Next, we will move to the item seven B, the twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
That's really just, as regurgitating what I shared during my superintendent's report. Just for the mere fact that it's timely and the broadcast that the DOE shared last week regarding the communication connected to no more than three percent reduction compared to this year's current state aid allotment. Just wanted to make sure that the board was fully aware of that. So it could be a non-issue for us, but if there will be a reduction, it will not exceed three percent compared to the state aid that we receive for the current school year, all right? And the other information on this was connected to the governor's address, state aid assignments that will come out forty-eight hours later. And then March tenth will be the early initial adoption of our budget. So that'll be our budget presentation at night, March tenth?
Yes.
So March tenth board meeting will be our initial presentation regarding the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Let's assume they are doing the reduction of the three percent. I'm assuming not. How does it affect our budget that we have already projected? Like, what would be taken out or what would be reduced? Or do we have excess reserve to cover our deficit? I'm just saying, what if we, a lot of stuff happening right now, I'm just saying, what if, what happens to us?
So, so if there is a three percent reduction, then we would have to identify the one point five million dollars that we've already kind of allocated for the budget. So there's a few things we can take a look at as it relates to some, you know, we've got some proposed staffing positions, new FTE positions. We've got, you know, cost savings that may come through attrition with people retiring. And then us determining whether or not we need to replace those positions. So it will be an exercise in determining what that will be. And, you know, we've, we've taken a preliminary look at it, but it'll be, you know, most of the money's connected to staffing. Obviously, we don't want to, we're not in the, in the business of reducing staff. Obviously, we're looking to avoid any negative implications to classrooms. But, you know, we'd have to look at some, some, you know, everything, everything on the table to determine what we can do to, to get that cost saving. So, you know, there's some, there's options for us. I mean, I'd like to think that, you know, I'd like to avoid having to do that, but I don't think it's gonna have a significant impact. But I will say, it's not a sustainable model. As we move, I think we can work it for this year. As we fast forward to next year, then it begins to have a negative implication regarding our instructional program. So I'd like to avoid that. So we'll let you know.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I just add one point? To your question on reserves, right now, we're, we've had an excellent track record. We do not rely on the kind of reserves that you're referring to because they're not recurring. So what we try to do is align our recurring expenses with reoccurring revenues, which is really just two things, state aid and our tax levy. So anything outside of that, we try to stay away from because you can get in a tight jam because you might have reserve one year, you know, funding teachers and salaries. And then the next year, that reserve is gone. And then you're caught in, and, you know, and in trouble. So we've had a very good, excellent record of staying away from that kind of stuff. Even when we had all of this COVID money flowing through here, we did not rely on that for reoccurring revenue. It was kind of one-shot expenses. So when that special revenue went away, the expenses went away, and we weren't necessarily harmed for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take our second opportunity for board member comments. There being none, will be our second opportunity for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to item number nine.
Motion to approve routine items by exception. Having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda item, routine agenda items as submitted. A, staffing for February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. B, HIV report from February tenth, twenty twenty-five. C, approve remote board member attendance. D, approve new field trip sites for upcoming trips. E, approve Hightstown High School Science League uncompensated club. F, approve HHS Thespien Society uncompensated club. G, approve HHS triathlon uncompensated club. H, approve travel and related expenses, virtual and in-person. I, approve HHS overnight trip, Universal Studios Orlando, Florida, April to May of twenty twenty-five. J, approve HHS program of studies, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. K, approve, approval competitive RFP process. L, out of district placement. M, co-op purchases. N, board meeting minutes for February tenth of twenty twenty-five. O, executive session board minutes, February tenth of twenty twenty-five. P, bill list of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Ms. Concepcion?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. LaRusso?
Yes.
Mr. Laberty?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lands?
Yes.
Being there's no need for a second executive session, we are adjourned.